Good evening. We'd like to welcome you to the Mount Vernon City School District Board of Education Work Session. Today is Tuesday, September the 16th. Please, everyone, stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have roll call, please?
Trustee Brown.
Present.
Trustee Kelly. Trustee McDonough.
Present.
Trustee Middleton.
Present.
Trustee Peterson.
Present.
Trustee Scott.
Present.
Trustee White. VP Mitchell. And President Maribel.
Present.
And we have a quorum and our student trustee Ador- trustee Adorna.
Thank you. We will now have a special presentation.
Every week, we open Mount Vernon's jewel box to see the wonderful work happening across our district and community. Take a look at this past week's jewel box, which you can also view on Facebook, Instagram, or YouTube.
Every child has unlimited potential. I don't care how you look, who you are, if you have a disability, if you speak a different language, every child has the ability to reach something at a higher level.
Thank you. That's just a taste of what's going on here in Mount Vernon. We'd like to thank our superintendent for that presentation. At this time, we would like to have a presentat- I would like to ask Dr. Strickland if he would introduce his cabinet members for their presentations tonight.
So, great evening, Cabinet, great, excuse me, great evening, trustees, great evening, Vice President Mitchell, President Maribel, the greater Rochester that is viewing, the greater Mount Vernon viewing audience. So this evening, we're going to have two presentations. One is going to be from the Department of Student Personnel Services, which is headed by our newly appointed superintendent, Ms. Luanne White, followed by a presentation on our New York State education data as of 2024-25 school year by Dr. Jamal Doggett. Thank you.
I know that we've had, we had several questions about transfers, about the Office of Pupil Personnel Services, which, if you've noticed on our agenda tonight, we're looking to change the name of that so that it more accurately reflects the services that we provide to our students. But tonight, Ms. White will be answering some of the, hopefully, some of the questions that the community has been raising from the summer, actually, from July 1 through the opening of school. So we hope, hopefully, we will be able to answer those questions for you tonight.
Good evening, President Maribel, Vice President Mitchell, trustees, and the viewing audience. My name is Luanne White, and I am the proud Assistant Superintendent of Student Personnel Services, and I'd like to take a few minutes to review some information, hopefully give some insight as to the experience we've been having this summer into the beginning of the school year, hopefully answer some questions, and we'll take it from there. So, we're going to discuss navigating the registration process, enrollment, and student services, and then a bit of an unprecedented year for the Mount Vernon City School District. I'm going to share with you some department data, the school closures, which were three schools, a little bit of information on McKinney-Vento, homebound, and homeschool, as well as transportation, district zoning, and the special education continuum. This number looks high from what may have been seen in the past. Effective as of 9/15/2025, which was yesterday, we have a total enrollment of 7,389. That number looked much higher than what we've been seeing in the past, which was roughly 6,000, maybe 800, 6,900. That number, although accurate, we are also responsible for our homebound students, our homeschool students, our out-of-district students, which may be charter, private schools, our compulsory aged students. And so, with all of those numbers included, we have an enrollment of 7,389 students. To share our department data, as of yesterday as well, I just shared the overall Mount Vernon City School District enrollment, total number of applications received as of the 14th of September was 659 applications. You'll see P4, which is preschool age four, we received 99, pre-K3, 43, the Council for Preschool Special Education, 36, and total of kindergarten through 12th grade, which is 481. Of the 659 total applications that were received, we have 147 that had been flagged as needing English language learner services, 124 which were flagged as immigrant or new to the United States, 79 have been flagged as needing special education services, including the 36 CPSC that I mentioned earlier from kindergarten through the 12th grade, 88 have been flagged as potential McKinney-Vento, and 18 have been flagged as foster care. We also are navigating approximately 231 address changes. I do want to share with you, before I go into the special class ratio, we have, in that department, three registrars who have been navigating all of this throughout the summer. We also have approximately four special education typists that assist as well, that actually had to jump on board to assist, to ensure that there was continuity in the registration process, in addition to other folks in this building who also jumped on board to ensure continuity for the registration process. I went on personally onto our website, as if I were a parent, to navigate the process because I needed to see first and foremost if it was a smooth process to engage in, and I, it was not. It was not. I am not a parent, but I needed to understand the, what parents have to navigate in our district to get a better understanding of what needs to happen moving forward. So that was eye-opening for me personally. I also, as we're looking at this data, decided to stay at the front desk to engage with our community and our parents, and there were varying experiences that I had with parents who were frustrated around the process, which I completely understood, in addition to the idea of some folks not being aware that there were school closures, wondering what was happening with transportation, wanting to know why they couldn't just transfer their children because they didn't care for a particular location of a school or a school. So I'll go a little bit more into detail, but I wanted to state the obvious because we do have a viewing audience, and many of our community members have expressed their happiness and also their unhappiness with me front-facing. So I wanted to acknowledge that as well. Next slide. Our special class ratios for our K8, we have, and this was presented by Ms. Michelle McKitty Bromley a few weeks ago, and this is something that we are focusing on, and so I just wanted to just draw your attention to, we have 27 sections of 812 classes, and these are our special education classes. We have 22 sections of our 1212, 14 classes of 1511, and five classes of 151. This is the 812 and 1212. These are more restrictive settings, and our goal is to reduce our most restrictive special education placements or settings. We would like to reduce that to least restrictive by the end of this school year. We are gauging about a 3% decrease, but I'd like to see actually more than that. Next. Thank you. So we went from a reduction of schools from 16 total schools to 13. The schools that were closed were Parker, which served grades K8, Leadership Academy, again, served grades K8, and Honor Academy, which served grades K8 as well. There was also a district rezoning, and the whole purpose of the rezoning is to ensure that communities had school options that were walking distance, anywhere from 1.5 miles or less in proximity to where they lived. And there was also an implementation of a sped continuum so that there were class settings or programs, special education programs, that were in the varying zones throughout the city. So some of our challenges that we experienced is this was a year of unprecedented change. Something else that we noticed was there was an increase in our McKinney-Vento designations, which I am meeting with state representatives. We're not quite sure why there may have been an increase, but there was some question around, was there an increase in the McKinney-Vento designation outside of what we're seeing politically and, of course, varying communities around homelessness? But there also were questions that were being asked with attempts to potentially circumvent the idea that transportation may not have been provided, and in some cases, questions around McKinney-Vento options were being asked. Families were engaging, which was not a bit concerning, but quite concerning to me. Families were engaging in revoking special education services for their children in lieu of getting a more desired school location. So that was concerning, and there was a lot of conversation and education to parents of what that does to their children. Safety transfer requests were at an astonishing high, enough that it led to inquiring about a board policy around what would warrant a safety transfer. And the safety transfers, or transfers in general, had to be, the request was that they come to a halt because at the time, all of the children that needed to be registered, which were upwards to almost 700, and I also addressed that, it was not easy registering students by way of the parent experience, and I also realized that it would take anywhere from 15 minutes to 45 to an hour for a parent to register their child on our website, and then it would take roughly 20 minutes to 45 minutes to actually register the child in our student information system. So I want to be realistic, although it doesn't sound ideal, it's the reality of what the experience was. So a lot of the transfers that were being requested did not align to the board policy. Some of the requests were concerns around the walk, concerns about the walk in certain communities. Various community members expressed, you know, their payment of taxes, and because they pay taxes, felt that they should have a choice in what it is that they wanted or where they wanted their children to go, although there were classroom sections and classroom numbers that we implemented to keep the numbers down, but there were folks that felt, this is where I want my child, and it doesn't matter. And some folks expressed that. The other piece, too, we, I mentioned this significant transportation requests. There was a desire, because this, this was, experiencing it firsthand, it tugged at some heartstrings for some, and there was a desire to have as many face-to-face, hold harmless meetings with some of our families as possible because it was clear that there were opportunities that may have been missed in this whole reconfiguration process, and it was definitely disturbing for some of our families, the experience that they were having. So literally having that sit down, and sometimes the answers were not what they wanted to hear, but the courtesy of hearing their concerns needed to happen. There were some that walked out with thank yous and others that had a choice of words if they weren't receiving what it is that they wanted, but the idea of sitting with people and understanding their plight was necessary. We had our staff working through Labor Day weekend, only to find that our student information system decided unbeknownst to most people, including our technology department, it decided that it was going to have a facelift, and the whole system changed on the, those who navigated the system normally, and because of the facelift, it now, the things that normally could be found could not be found for the registration process, and it made it that much more challenging. So the majority of the women that work in the Office of Student Personnel Services spent their Labor Day attempting, or Labor Day weekend, holiday weekend, doing registrations at all hours of the night to just ensure that we didn't have lines and things like that. I mentioned the address changes. There was, a lot of the dialogue was definitely time-consuming, and to the point where, when you're having a face-to-face dialogue and you have limited staff, it, it took folks away from actually doing, being able to sit at the computer and actually do the registration. And so there was a balance with that. Obvious things that we noticed as well is that there's some staffing shortages, especially in the area of teacher assistants in some of our schools, as well as classroom teachers, and there were some school space limitations. So these were some of the overall challenges that we, we noticed. Although our highlights are not as, as full as our challenges, but they are, there are some highlights. We're caught up. We managed to navigate all of that within the first week and a half of school, so there is a slight sense of calm right now, which is really good. So now we can focus in areas like spending time with some of that transfer information that folks asked for us to take a look at. We're now also personally calling families to address some of the concerns that they've shared. We are, I mentioned that we're notifying families around the transfers, and although, you know, honestly, the transfers and the process of it is quite limited, and we are using the board policy, but explaining it to families is, is of utmost priority. All students with IEPs have been placed. There's been a specific focus on discharges. We were receiving emails from families stating that they may have discharged their child, yet they were still getting emails and information about the school, and we cannot discharge until we have confirmation and proof that the child is actually enrolled, especially if they're out of state. Sometimes hunting that down can be a bit of a task, but we cannot discharge a student unless we have evidence of that. And also, the, as much as it was a negative thing, the significant reduction in the use of transportation helped us from a fiscal lens because that was something that was being discussed previously, and we, we really, that reduction was very significant, although not well-received, but very significant from a fiscal lens. So, you know, one of the things our superintendent constantly reinforces, if you're coming with the problem, come with the solution. And so I shared some highlights with you, but these are some of the future review, potential next steps, and essentially some of the overarching goals that I have for that department. One of the things I'd like to do is initiate a comprehensive review of the student registration process. Again, I went through it as a parent myself, and it just was not okay by any means, and I see some folks shaking their head in agreeance. I can't sit here, stand here, or anything else and act as if that was a seamless process. It was not. Reform student placement and the transfer policy, and I'd like to spend some time with you all with some input from the community around what that transfer policy would look like, and essentially maybe create a window within the school year to give families the opportunity to, to transfer if this is what they so desire, but within reason, and having some type of policy that we can vet and vote upon. The, exploring the technology and the procedural improvements to better serve the staff and streamline their work. Three people navigating registration is just not ideal as well. There were some brief conversations in the midst of, of trying to do this work, where I've heard stories where it was, well, the secretaries back in the schools did the registration back in the days, and then it came back to central office, and why don't we do it this way, and this worked better? I think some, some overall feedback is warranted and needs to be looked at. The other piece, too, is create a designated face-to-face registration office that's staffed with bilingual parent liaisons. We cannot act as if some of the limitations, I got on as an English-speaking non-parent, I can't imagine what it was like for a non-English-speaking parent, or a non, someone asked, well, did you give a application? And they said, well, they can speak English. It doesn't also mean that they're literate, right? And so these are things that revealed itself, and so we cannot assume, nor can we make judgment. And so if we create a safe space for folks to come in and not have to explain their limitations as a daughter of a man who was dyslexic, and so that hit home for me. So these are things that we need to create, as well as developing a cross-training program for department staff because there are things that folks essentially was, for example, McKinney-Vento, we had McKinney-Vento liaisons, and they were quite proficient in their knowledge of McKinney-Vento, but they should not be the only ones that are quite proficient in their knowledge of McKinney-Vento. It needs to be understood by our school-based support team, staff members such as our social workers, guidance counselors, folks in the registration department. Everyone in here should be able to speak to the processes. And so these are some of the things that I would like to see as opportunities to review, possibly implement as next steps, and get more feedback on. And that is all I have, so I am ready for your questions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And may I just say that thank you so very much for a well-done, comprehensive explanation of some of the challenges that we experienced in the parents, and just the, I guess, the compassion that it was presented with and that it was met with face-to-face. So I just want to say thank you, Ms. White, so.
Thank you.
And I know we have board members that have questions, so what I would like to do in order to make sure that it's orderly, right, is if I can start from this, I'll just go around the table, and that may make it easier because I see a lot of people nodding their heads and raising their hands. And we have our student ex-official member that's here tonight, and I don't know, his name is Leonard, and I would like to know, first of all, I'd like to welcome him, right, for his very first board meeting.
(applause)
And then secondly, I'd like to know if he has any questions right now, and if not now, then we can come back to you and ask if you have any later.
So while she was presenting, I heard a word, McKinney Prevento. This is my first time hearing that. Could you explain what it is?
It's an act, a law that has been put in place by the state to address essentially homelessness. And so it's a hold harmless law that anyone can walk in, whether there are circumstances without explanation, and, and in the most discreet way, share that they're essentially homeless, and we are by law, no questions asked, to place children in schools. We do not need to wait for things like a lease or proof of birth and all of the required things that would be needed to register a student. That would not be required if they're deemed McKinney-Vento. We just register them, get them in, get them processed, provide resources if requested, and follow up after the fact. You're welcome.
Trustee McDonough?
Thank you, and thank you for stepping in at this time to do this difficult work, and thanks to your staff, and, and thanks to the parents for being patient with us as we work through this. So thanks very much. My main question is about enrollment. Obviously, I saw that number, and my head is kind of spinning. I think the first thing I think that's important we do is have uniformity, making sure we're comparing apples to apples. And that's my worry, is that we're not, is that, so the number we had last November was 6853. The BOSI's projection for 2025 was 6142. That's 17% off where we are. That's a big miss. So I'm worried that we're making decisions on bad data, or that we're talking about one number and it includes preschool, and another number doesn't include preschool. So I would request that we just come to some uniform decision so we always know what we're talking about. The other thing you mentioned, inclusive in your, in your number of 7389, was, did you say charter students were included in that as well?
Out-of-district, so that includes charter.
So charter students who are, were not responsible for, not enrolled in the district, they're enrolled in another school, are included in this enrollment number?
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay. So that's going to be a big difference. That'll explain a chunk of it because that wasn't in the BOSI's number, it was clearly not, and it wasn't in the number that we had for enrollment last year. So that's fine to do that. I think we just need to be uniform in how we do it. So that's that, that piece of it. And just briefly regarding the move towards inclusive education, I think that's wonderful. You talked about your self-contained continuum. What do you have in terms of the number of special ed students who are either in general ed with support or in an ICT class? What percentage are we at? Do you know that number?
I don't.
Okay. I would guess it's a, it's a small fraction of the overall number?
For ICT, can you repeat the question if you don't mind?
Yeah, so kids who have an IEP who are in gen-ed classes that are not in one of these self-contained classrooms, what percentage? And then also, along that line, kids who are in an integrated co-taught classroom, which wouldn't be included in any of those configurations you, you put up there?
So I definitely know that the percentage is relatively low, which this is one of the first districts that I've seen where the number of self-contained classrooms actually over, like, over exceed the amount of integrated co-talk classrooms. I would like to mention that there was a sort of a misnomer that special education classrooms, that the integrated co-teaching model was actually more expensive than self-contained classrooms. Yes, I did hear that from multiple individuals when I came here. So right away, I got with Ms. White, I got with Ms. McKinney-Bromley and Dr. Ramsey at the time, and said, look, we need to be doing least restrictive. Just because a student is on the autism spectrum disorder, you know, continuum, does not mean that that student cannot be in an integrated co-talk classroom. There's some students that have greater abilities than all of us, that can multiply and divide with the quickness, and, and we, we just put them into a certain class just based off of their disorder, and that's not right.
It's not right.
It's not fair to them.
It's not fair.
So what we are doing is So what we are doing is doing this comprehensive look at these self-contained classrooms. The special education office will tell you, "I do not like 15-1s." I was a principal of a 15-1, a school with 15-1s. Generally, those students are students that can be in ICT classes with two teachers or they're 12-on-1 because they may have some behavioral challenges. 15-1 is not advantageous to a district. Not only that, but in ICT class, you can only have 12 to 13 students with disabilities versus 15-1, which has 15 students with learning disabilities and one teacher. So it's more advantageous to go with the ICT route. So we're going to continue to move that, and we'll be sure to get you that number about the percentage of students in ICT or that have 504s. I did also want to preface that we do service students in charters that have IEPs.
IEPs, correct.
Okay, thank you.
But I do know that we still need to level set for the record just to make sure that we're not giving data that seems a little off. But I do want to say that the exuberant amount of services that speech, OTPT, we still have to service students in charters, and we're already having a hard time servicing our own students.
Correct.
Understood. Thank you.
Yes.
Trustee Kelly?
Thank you.
I wanted to thank you for your responsiveness to the community in the registration process. That you put yourself through it is commendable. Because trustee Brown was sharing her experience with one of her neighbors, that she had to walk her through it. And I couldn't believe that it was so difficult. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
The other thing is, as opposed to the people that need to be trained to do registration, could you institute a cheat sheet for when you're doing registration so that those questions are answered? I know a lot of times when it's a more difficult process, people create cheat sheets and makes the information accessible. The other thing is the immunization. How do we do immunization? Like, this is the hot topic now. How is that being treated in our district? That's a question, right? And could you break out the numbers so we know exactly the class sizes? Like how the buildings are being populated and the need for the teachers? Because I know we have shortages. So I like the fact that you did present an overall number for us, but I think it would be most helpful if we know how the buildings are, what the population in each of the buildings or what the needs are in those buildings. That's a request. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay.
Vice President Mitchell?
Thank you. Ms. White, thank God for you. I'm going to just say that. Thank you so much. I thank the heavens because that's one of the very best reports that I've heard on registration process in many years. I have, I cannot draw a line to connect myself to any other assistant superintendent for PPS who ever said they walked the walk of the parent, and they can determine and say clearly it is a hard journey. So I thank you for taking that journey. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
I also appreciate your grace in being able to accept the criticisms with the praise as you just did. And that takes something that means it says a lot about who you are as well as your compassion for what you're doing. I would kind of shadow trustee McDonough to hear the numbers when the last six to 10 months leading up to the reorganization, it was being drilled home that downward enrollment, downward enrollment, downward enrollment was the reason for us closing buildings. To now hear this and then couple that with us having these numbers that we were given before, not including the numbers for charter, it definitely raises a lot of eyebrows and questions and concerns. So I shadow trustee McDonough's request that we see that, agree on how we're going to look at these numbers going forward and see the truth to what we were shown so that we can understand what this whole, this contrast is. Revoking, so two things that stood out to me. You mentioned parents revoking specials to services. And these are special education IEP mandated services. You have parents willing to revoke their child's services for a more desirable address, right?
Yes.
What does that say? What does that say? I mean, your opinion?
It raises a red flag. Services are based on a diagnosis, and the purpose of the diagnosis is to provide what's needed so that the diagnosis doesn't remain. So even if we are, you know, placed on medication, but your goal is never to stay on the medication. It's to sort of manage, streamline, and then find ways to come off. And so special education is not a lifelong sentence either. So that is never the goal to place a child there, hence the reason why our more restrictive environments cannot remain that way. We have to move our students to the least restrictive. That's the purpose as well. And not solely for our special education population, but for also our English language learners. They should not enter and come in and stay in a specific designation for two, three, four, five, six years, as well as our McKinney-Vento.
And I think it also speaks to what Dr. Strickland said earlier about the, and what it is. We've talked about it in the past, just the over-classification of students and special needs and IEP needing. I think it speaks to that as well. It says, you know, you have revocation of services to be in a different building. Then I think it just sheds more focus on who, how these IEPs are in place and the fact that are we, where are we overclassifying? So again, thank you and your entire team for being on the front line, staying on the front line. And you're casting rocks and flowers, but it's a lot of rocks. So thank you to you and your team for managing.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Trustee Peterson?
Thank you, Ms. White, so much. That was an amazing presentation, especially because I think registration has been one of my biggest contacts from parents and community members over the past couple of months. I definitely shadow what trustee Kelly was asking about the building occupancy at this point. If we, be possible for us to have a breakdown by building? Because I know I've been hearing a lot from folks who feel like the buildings are crowded. So I would love to see that and the number with the charters and out-of-district students not in it to see. So then if we can really gauge, okay, what type of information were you all received last school year? Also, excellent idea, when I was the coordinator for the parent research, or resource center, I spent the entire summer registering families. That's all I did. And I feel like I might have done that a couple of times this summer too, but it's very valuable, especially if you have parents who English is their second language. I had parents who were deaf, you know, ASL, so it is having, utilizing the parent resource center is a true benefit for registering families as well. Excellent job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Trustee Brown?
Okay. Good evening. An amazing presentation. I liked that everything was clearly called out and defined. As trustee Kelly said, I did the registration with a neighbor to see what it was like, and it was an arduous task. There was a lot of things that you needed to have ready. And just because my mind is a project manager, I knew to tell her, "Have this and have that." And we would run back and forth to the scanner and to my computer to make sure that we were able to upload everything. So maybe for next year, when registration is, you know, getting ready to start, we should probably have some services like scanners and printers and stuff for people to have ready here or wherever we're going to have a center for people to register. And maybe it could be all hands on deck type of thing where, like you said, not just some people know how to do the registration, but maybe because it seems like we're having an upward trend of registration, that we have more people who can help assist with the registration. But other than that, I think everything was, they've asked all the questions I would have asked. So thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Middleton?
Good evening. I just want to say you did an excellent job in your presentation. And I have to let you all know that I've been in the district for like 41 years. I'm not that old. But anyway, and anyway, I started out as a typist to a stenographer, so registration is not new to me. And I went through the entire process with other stenographers and assistants who basically are very versed with the process. And so I think it might be nice if instead of two or three people being in one place, you put the right people in place to assist. We did evening registrations, and of course, in the beginning of the year with all that is already going on with the school closures, you got a lot of annoyed parents, right? And that's always for the part when registration happens. But it gets easier and it gets better when you have the right people in place. You're that person and your team, and I just, I thank you for being here. And I thank you for what you have done and what you're doing. I just want to ask this question though. How many left the district?
Ooh, you know, that's fluid. It's ongoing. I have to get that number to you. It's not as high as one would think, I believe it or not, but I will definitely get that number to you. The amount of discharges, yes.
With the increase, my concern is our school closures. What are we doing with these three buildings if we do? Because I've heard complaints in the last week about some of the schools and the classrooms being overcrowded now. So how do we handle that with the increase of the numbers, although they're charter school and et cetera? You know, how are we going to move with that? But good job. Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Trustee Scott?
Thank you very much. One of the things about going last is I don't have to say too much because everybody said it for me. So basically, one of the things I definitely wanted to point out is I look forward to what trustee McDonough, trustee Middleton, trustee Mitchell talked about in terms of the numbers. Because I'm a visual type of person, so I would love to see what those numbers are. But I do see where you talk about staff shortages, where you talk about the face-to-face. And I know how that can be when the community comes to you and they're in your face and they're saying a lot of good things. But I would like for you to talk about how are you looking at self-care for yourself and your staff?
Well, I'm leaving for Spain tomorrow. I'm a self-care. No, that was previously planned before I started. I'm actually coming back sooner because of this work. But thank you for asking that, and that's something that I try to, along with Dr. Doggett and Dr. Strickland, those, the women downstairs, they took some hits. They took some hits. And there was a point, the Brooklyn and me kicked in on one, and I said, "You can't talk to my people like that." And the person reeled themselves in and said, "You know what? You're right." I was so frustrated, and so it makes sense. One of the things that was mentioned is I did ask that we have those late evenings. So Thursday nights from four until eight on, for the month of September, we have an extended evening. Dinner was purchased for the ladies for their time, again, because I did share that they gave up their holiday weekend. You know, we're going to be all right. I think the thing that will be the best win for us is those, some of those suggestions go in place, and we streamline this work so that we won't have to work as hard and we're working smarter. But I appreciate that question because that's big for me and that I know our superintendent wants to be to bed at 8:00. But he wasn't because he would call me with stuff. "Did you see this? Did you see that?" But I appreciate that question and I appreciate, because I know behind the scenes, all of you have understood because I know that you all are catching it as well. And so I appreciate the understanding and the allowing me to share and speak to it and in some cases, defending the work. So I appreciate that.
Thank you very much, and just wanted to make sure that it's embedded in your systems. Self-care is important.
Exactly. Thank you.
Our student trustee has another comment or question?
Hello, everyone. So she mentioned the difficulties in registration, and I was wondering if I could put my input in that?
Absolutely. Please.
So I'm currently trying to apply to colleges, and my mentor and I are, you know, using QuestBridge. And through that process, QuestBridge application has links inside where it leads you to a YouTube video in which it shows you detailed processes in which we, no, I mean, in which they fill out the application and everything. And I was wondering if you could probably do that. And also to add upon that, we could just make it in different variations in which is different people who doesn't understand English could, you know, put, understand it easily.
Thank you. Like a tutorial. Thank you.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, just a couple of things. I want to say thank you, number one, to the future review potential next steps. So thank you for laying those things out. I know that Dr. Strickland will be looking at them and for you to be able to drill down on a plan that you can develop and hopefully implement it because we'd like to know, and which is our role, is how we can help in order to ensure that we make your lives easier. And so I just want to say thank you. And Dr. Strickland does have some final comments?
Yes, just really quick to our student trustee, Mr. Arduro. We do have an updated video that is online for the registration process that does not circumvent the fact that it is still very arduous and difficult to run with. I will say that I, in the previous district, did push back around the electronic process, you know, because all of our families aren't where we want them to be yet. Just because they have a smartphone or an iPad or a tablet doesn't mean that the access works well. I did want to take an opportunity to put out a plug. Our parent liaisons are now housed at the Graham School, which is at 421 East Fifth Street, and they're there to service your needs. I do, I won't say too much, but we are looking at bringing them on for more of a prevalent role within the district because this summer, I know that they were working, and I know we needed their help and we couldn't have access to them. So, you know, more news to come on that. I did want to not forget about trustee Kelly's question around immunizations. That is a general issue around, you know, folks, students in the black community, black and brown communities. Some of our families don't have the access, especially here in Mount Vernon as it pertains to clinics and hospitals and things of that nature. But what we, what I will begin doing is trying to start to find a way to publicize, you know, places where families can get those services because pretty soon exclusion time is going to come where we can't have students without immunizations in classrooms. And I don't want that to affect, to affect their attendance. I do want to put a plug out for the public. We can't, please don't wait till September to register your child because it is a long process and it does create a backlog. And we're here the entire summer. The individuals were down there. We got slammed in September and school started shortly thereafter. And we could have, you know, really mitigated some of the backlog by doing that. I will say that, yes, some of the overcrowding is slightly real. I've been walking out and about in the classrooms. And I will also say that there are some students that have not shown up yet. So I want you all to be clear that, you know, did they actually show? So I heard a few times, we have 21 pre-kindergartners. Have all 18 of them, which is the legal mandate, have they all showed up? "No, not yet." Well, we have to wait. That's why we have Beds Day to kind of clean those things up. I do want to say also, transportation, I know it's a big deal. It is a huge deal. However, that's why we created these zones. We went over budget by over $9 million last year in transportation and are operating from last year on a $9 million deficit. That's where the bulk of the increase came. I do want you to be reminded that transportation is 6.4% of our budget at almost $18 million. That number is astronomical for the size of our city, and that's why we have to make change. And I know it's painful and it's hard and people are just demanding, but, you know, we just, we only have an obligation, honestly, for two miles for students and three miles for our high school students. But we are still working on how can we make sure that we get transportation to those that need it the most. And then... And then, uh, uh, finally, um, I was just going to say, I had a great meeting with the Mount Vernon, um, the Mount Vernon Education Foundation. And we're looking at some possible ideas around, uh, helping students with the FAFSA process. Um, those were very initial talks, but I'm really going to push on it because it doesn't cost that much. We just need folks in these schools helping our, our students, um, apply for colleges. So with that being said, I just wanted to end that. And thank you, uh, Ms. White.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions or last comments? Okay, thank you so much, Ms. White.
Thank you, everyone.
Good evening, everyone. I have the pleasure to, um, present our New York State Education Department data from the 2024, 2025 school year. But in order to do that as well, I'm going to take a closer look at the Mount Vernon City School District year-to-year growth, um, starting four years ago. Next slide. Growth requires change. So when I presented data, some of the slides look familiar because it's an add-on to the presentation that I've done, I believe in January 2024, when I did the NICE data presentation. So I would like to always start with the importance of change and what change looks like. And I presented this as well. These are the stages of change presented back, um, in January 2024, where I introduced to the community what stages of the change process that the Mount Vernon City School District was in. We were in, according to Kurt Lewin's change theory, we were in an unfreezing stage. We were preparing the organization for change and we were in a changing phase where we began to resolve and unlock the uncertainty and look for new ways to do things. So if you go to the next slide, Michael Fulham talks about the process of change. It's pretty much the same thing. We were in these two stages, the initiation phase and the implementation phase back in 2022, 2023, when the presentation was done. So now we're going to move forward. I'm going to present the 2024, 2025 data, also with the data previously presented. So you can see some, a longitudinal study. So, uh, as a reminder, our proficiency goals for the past three years have been a 3% increase in students' performance proficiency levels and 75% of our students performing at levels two, threes and fours. So keep that in mind as I go through the presentation. Next slide. So again, very familiar slides from previous presentations, but please pay attention to the two boxes on the side. The purple box is the amount of students performing at levels two, threes and fours. And the goal was always 75% and the overall proficiency rate. This was the baseline year. This is 2021, 2022, when students came back from COVID. So as you can see, we had 72% of our students in ELA grades three to eight performing at levels two, threes and fours and a proficiency rate of 39%. Next slide. The previous year, we've increased the amount of students performing at levels two, threes and fours to 74%. And, uh, we increased by 3%, so we met our goal of a overall proficiency rate increase in the 2022, 2023 school year. This is a slide that we was previously presented. Next slide. For 2023, 2024, as you can see, we remained flat. We didn't grow that year, but our proficiency remain, uh, proficiency rate remained the same. But we had a slight decrease in our levels twos, threes and fours. And I'm going to talk about that a little bit later. Last year's performance, we reached our goal of 75% or more students performing at levels two, threes and fours. And we also met our goal of our 3% increase of our overall proficiency rate in ELA. Next slide just shows, um, a picture of all four years. And as you can see, some of the things that we're doing to increase our ELA scores and sustain is strengthen our writing and vocabulary instruction, writing across the curriculum. We have phonics lessons in the upper grades, which we, um, started last year. And we've been doing ongoing training and professional development in the science of reading. Also have some highlights that I'd like to discuss. For ELA, our highest proficiency rates was Lincoln School at 64%. Let's give them a round of applause for their hard work last year. Um, our school with the highest year-to-year growth was Benjamin Turner Academy. They had a 15% increase. And the following schools have met the 3% or more growth. William School, Grime School, this is in ELA, Mount Vernon Honor Academy, Mount Vernon Leadership, and the Nelson Mandela Jose Holocausta School. So congratulations to our schools for meeting their goals. Now we're going to move into math. And again, if you can pay attention to the same goals we had 70, we want 75% of our students performing at levels two, threes and fours and a 3% increase. So again, these slides are previously presented in January 2024, so I'm not going to spend too much time. But as you can see, in 2021, 2022, our scores were at 24%. And that year was the year that we really focused on math. Um, and if you go to the next slide, when we came back the following year, we had a 60, we had a 15% increase in proficiency rates. And as you can see, we had an 18% increase of our students performing at levels two, threes and fours, which means we were getting rid of our level one students. 2023, 2024, which is the next year, um, we had a 1% increase in our proficiency rates. And if you go to 2025, 2024, 2025, we were down 1% in our proficiency rates. We did not meet our goal. However, we did in- increase the amount of students by 1% of students performing in levels two, three and four. So again, the next slide, if you go to the next slide, it just shows the trajectory over the four years. Some of the things that we're doing to increase our math instruction is that we're strengthening the use of the instructional model of how tier one instruction is taught in the classroom. And we're ensuring that our RTI instructional block is balanced. So as you, if you looked at the previous ELA slides, you saw that we had an increase of students performing at levels two, threes and fours. And we had a significant reduction of our students performing at level one. A lot of that is due to the RTI period where students get their small group instruction. But what we have to do is make sure that we're balancing that with ELA and math. Cause what happens, and as a former principal, I'm guilty of it too. A lot of that time, those ELA instructional RTI periods are used for ELA only and not math. And therefore ELA and math. So we have to make sure we find that balance as well. So I have this slide up here and I told you I was going to get back to it. And this is a slide of our change leadership. And this talks about something that happened in Mount Vernon. And we knew, we kind of anticipated it was going to happen. It's called the implementation dip. And what that is, it's a dip in performance as a confidence as one encounters new innovation that requires new skills and new understandings. We've had a lot of new programs and changes in programs in addition to programs over the last two years. And that's, that requires a lot of learning. So research states that sometimes leads to implementation dips where the staff is getting used to the new learning, they're finding new ways to do things. And sometimes there's a dip or a level off. So as you see previously, in two years ago in ELA, our ELA implementation dip, we remained flat. Where we increased some of our level ones last year in math. And we anticipated that this was going to happen, that we had a 1% decrease. But now that we have professional development, there's nothing new. We want to sustain the professional development. We're just refining what we have. We are anticipating that that implementation dip is gone. So we should be moving forward and we should be meeting our goals in ELA and math. We did meet in ELA, but we have to make sure we are much more aggressive and much more focused on our math. So some math highlights. Again, the highest proficiency rates in the district, Lincoln School with 56%. Let's give them a round of applause. Again, the highest year-to-year growth, Benjamin Turner Academy was 16%. And the following schools have 3% or more growth, um, is Mount Vernon Honor Academy and Nelson Mandela Holocausta School. Round of applause. We're going to move on to science. Science is going to look a little bit different than it did in the previous years is because we have different assessments. So you're not going to see a four-year comparison with this data because we had a grade four test and a grade eight test. In one year, we didn't have the grade four test. Two years ago, we implemented the new grade five science test and it is hard. And, and the grade eight test as well. So I'm going to go to this slide. If you look at the proficiency levels again, the amount of students in 2023, 2024 was 77%. But the overall proficiency rates was 31%. This is a new exam and it is hard. It is a reading exam. Uh, we're doing some things. We're looking to explore a new science curriculum because we have an, our discovery ed is up. And we're looking to adopt a new science curriculum, hopefully for the 2025, 2026 school year. Next slide. 2024, 2025, as you can see, we made some gains. Uh, we're at 81% of our students scoring at level twos, threes and fours. And we have a proficiency rate of a 7% increase of 38%. Some science highlights. The highest proficiency rate, Mount Vernon Honor Academy at 55%. That's a 21% increase from last year. Again, that was a new science test. So again, new learning. Uh, we, we're looking to get a new curriculum to more, to align more with the science eight exam and the grades, um, five science exam as well. And we also have to make sure that we are making sure that our staff, teachers, um, and we make sure that, that we're teaching science in grades K through four. Because one of the things that happens is that ELA monopolizes a lot of the times and science and social studies kind of gets pushed to the back burner. And we know that. The following schools have growth of 3% or more in science. Benjamin Turner Academy, Denzel Washington School of the Arts, Graham School, Grime School, Hamilton School, Nelson Mandela School and Pennington School. Let's give our schools a round of applause. So I'm going to move on to the regions data. And how this, um, data is presented is basically the English, the global history, US history and government, algebra regions, geometry, algebra two, living environment. We're going to present that all in one. Um, and just so you know that five out of eight of these regions met the goal of 3% or more. But if you go to the next slide, I'm going to talk about the accountability levels and the past, the, the pass rates over the past two years. So as you can see, our accountability levels of students meeting levels ones, twos, threes and fours. And the pass fail and pass rate was 49% and 51% pass rate for the year 2023, 2024. If you move on to the next slide, the pat, the fail rate has decreased to 45%. So I had a 4% decrease and the pass rate increased by 4% as well. And as you can see that as students move through the levels, if you go to the next slide, I have both of them on. So you can do a comparison. You can see that we're gaining more students at the level, level three. And we're slowly reducing our level ones. So that is the goal to get out of the level one and level two zones. And again, if you look, if you remember from the prison, presentation that I did back in July 15th about the I-Rate data grades K through eight, students, more students are leaving on grade level. It's a significantly higher percentage. So these students will be reaching a high school shortly. And this data is going to definitely look better over the next few years. Graduation rates for 2024, 2025 is 75%. But I also wanted to tell you from where we started from in 2014, 2015, we started at 61%. We moved all the way up to 79% in 21, 22, but that's when the district had a lot of, um, passes because of, um, exemptions for COVID during that time. So we're hovering around 75%. Um, I know the superintendent has set some ambitious goals, 5%. So we're looking to reach that 80% next year. One of the things that we're doing, we're doing, taking a closer look at monitoring the ninth grade students with five or more credits. Because if we know if we can tackle that area, the more, the more likely they will graduate on time. And we also want to offer more students taking, um, the biology and algebra regions in grade eight. And our highlights for our schools, secondary schools, the Mount Vernon High School and STEAM Academy have met the superintendent's goal. Even though Denzel did not reach it, they have a very high graduation rate of 94%. So again, I presented the slide changes. You can go back one more for, yes. I presented the slide changes previously. So now this is where we are now. So if you look at it, we were preparing the organization two and a half, three years ago. We've prepared the organization. We still will continue. Now we're in the changing phase. So this is the trial and error, the practice, the new learning, the uncertainty. You hear things, I don't like this. We have no curriculum. I want to throw this away. So you hear those things. So when you hear those things, just know we're in a changing phase. You got to get through that to get to the refreezing and we sustain the change. So once you start making the train, um, changing and hitting your stride, that's where we want to be. So if you go to the next slide as well, for Michael Fulham process, um, process of change, we're in the implementation phase. It's time to plan, feedback, opportunities. And again, these stages are, can be fluid. We can get to institutionalizing, sustaining what we have, but then we have to sometimes go back to the previous stage. We have to go back to preparing the organization again. If we get an influx of new teachers, we have to go back. So if not locked into these stages specifically, I just want to give an illustration of how we're moving across the continuum. So thank you. One of the things that we definitely have to thank our teaching staff for doing a tremendous job and our building leaders, especially last year. Last year was a specifically taxing and challenging year for our staff and they still came through for us. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Doggett. Um, so we started on this end this time. So we're going to start on this end for the, uh, for Dr. Doggett's presentation. So trustee Scott?
Self-care. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for the presentation. Um, and thanks for, I guess, bringing us back.
Yes.
You know, in order for us to see, um, where we are now compared to January. Um, I have no questions at this time, so I'm going to pass it on to, back to the president.
Right, trustee Middleton?
Um, I've heard his presentations before, similar. And it's great to see those ones shoot up and then when you got to go back to regroup. And I see it happening and just want to say thank you, well done. And just, we, we going to stick together to make sure it does happen. So good job.
Thank you.
Trustee Brown?
Um, good, great presentation. Um, and I want to applaud those schools who had those, uh, percentage growths. That's amazing, especially as a parent who had a fourth grader last year and we were, you know, trying to just pray our way through it. Um, and so I am happy that, um, there was that growth throughout the whole entire district and that we were able to highlight those schools. And, um, I'm looking forward to seeing what the new, um, science program will be. Um, with my background as a civil engineer, seeing what the kids are going, um, to be learning at a, at a young age. Because when I was that age, I wasn't doing engineering stuff. I wanted to be a lawyer and here I am 25 years later. Um, so I'm excited to see what the district is going to come up with, um, to, uh, try to gauge the kids. Um, so that'll be nice, but great presentation. Thanks.
Trustee Peterson?
Thank you so much, Dr. Doggett. Um, first, I want to really thank the teachers who, you know, from being in the classroom during COVID and, you know, it's, they've gone through a lot. And so for them to still, you know, come through for us, for our students, for our families. I really appreciate, shout out to all the teachers, um, and staff who helped in the classrooms. I am su- excellent presentation because I have been dying to see the 24, 25 New York State. Cause I've been on the website like, where? Calling them like, I haven't released yet. So I really appreciate that. Um, I am very happy to hear that discovery ed will soon be going because that science curriculum, you know, almost it's, 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 I feel like there's nothing wrong if you take it back like to the old school. Like fine, like the textbooks, like I feel like when I was a child, we learned a lot in science. And it was, it wasn't that complicated. So even sometimes looking at, you know, uh, a science curriculum that is, you know, has more textbooks instead of everything online, things like that to get students back in books and back in writing. Um, I think that's important because we've gone, we've, our students have come out of that, out of textbooks. And we all know when we go into college, yes, there's, you know, lots of stuff online, but we still have to use textbooks. So, um, that.
I was going to respond to you, but you have more.
Oh, and the departmentalizing math and ELA for the lower grades, I love it. I'm really looking forward to seeing what the difference is going to be come a year from now, the end of the school year, the end of next school year, to see the outcome from that. So whoever idea that was, it's amazing. I love it. Can't wait.
Yes, well, what happened with, one of the things with discovery, and this is one thing, um, we talked about as a CNI group, um, years back, is that that was Is that that was good for the time when we purchased it. But what Mount Vernon does, and most districts do, because it's much more cost effective. It's a purchase a program for a six-year period, but you're locked into it for six years. So if something changes, you're locked into it for six years. So how do you navigate that? And I could give an example when we had invigils for math and everybody loved invigils. It was great. Everybody got into the groove. And then what happened? The state changed from Common Core standards to next generation, but next generation standards. But now we have the Common Core. We have three more years of invigils and you saw what happened to our math scores. So, once we look at our science program, we have to really see and take into consideration how long? Because it's much more cost effective for six years. Is this something we want to do or do we want to do something for three years? That's maybe a little bit more expensive, just in case it's not working. But also at the same time, are we implementing with fidelity as well? You can't just say it's not working if you're not implementing fidelity. Because again, soon as we don't like something, soon as we see the score drop three percent, throw the program out. No, no, no. Sometimes you got to just make some refinements and keep moving. So as you can see, our math data, even though it's going up, it went down a point, it's still in the trajectory of going up. Now, now, if it next year keeps going down like this, now we have a problem. You want your data to go up. You might have some fluctuation, but as long as the trajectory is up, that's why I wanted to show a longitudinal study.
Trustee Mitchell?
Another really insightful and incredible presentation, Dr. Doggett. Thank you, uh, for this. I've been here watching you and listening to this report from over the past few years. And we have seen the trajectory of upward movement, which is good. I'm not going to jump up and down about a seventy-five percent graduation rate, I just won't. But I do like the, um, the clarity to our parents and the taxpayers listening so they can understand. We are still in a place that we're moving away from. So, um, again, seventy-five percent is an honest understanding of the graduation rate. Where we have seen in the past where it was like, we looked at one building's percentage rate and that's just not accurate. You have to look at it from a district's point of view, which I'm thankful for you showing it in that fashion. And I only call out the, um, the importance of change and the, and the process of change. Those two slides are amazing because it truly shows us being in a rigid state of where we were. Us working to get to a point of thawing out to make it liquid so that we're moving towards restructuring what that shape will be, what our district will be. So it's very, very intuitive for me to look at. And I hope that the parents and folks at home will go on the district site and take a look at this slideshow. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Trustee Kelly?
Thank you, Dr. Doggett. I appreciate the presentation. The slides were much clearer. So I appreciate your team for doing that. I know you work incredibly hard with your team, um, to present stuff to us. I wanted to know, is the level two, are they proficient?
No, they're not proficient. But as far as accountability, we get credit for them towards our accountability status. If they're level one, we do not. And they are including our denominator, so they hurt when we have level ones. So once you get rid of the level ones, but if you notice, we want to get rid of them early. So we do a lot of emphasis on grades pre-K, K one and two, because that becomes your three, four and five. So based on previous slides with the I-Rate, that data is looking better. So as that, as that data looks better, overall, these students are going to reach the high school. So there's two goals. One is we want to make sure that we provide the intervention at the middle and high school level, which we're doing. But we want to make sure we do more prevention, preventative measures with our, um, foundations program, our K to two. If we strengthen that area, we strengthen our graduation rates.
Okay.
Because you close the gap before it starts.
Okay. Because there are correlations, right, of different things that impact our student, um, data.
Yes.
Staff turnover is one of them, right?
Yes.
Okay. So Mount Vernon has a problem with that. Would that be one of the correlations that impacts our student performance?
It can, yes, it can. And this year, um, we have a few teachers that may have moved grade levels as well. So that may impact as well. For example, you may have been a sixth grade teacher for twenty years at Leadership. And now you're at Pennington and you're in first grade. So we've provided the professional development support for that. But again, it's going to take time, um, for that teacher to get used to the new way of teaching the lower grades. Especially if they have no exposure to the foundations. We're in year four at this time, so we have to do some training. And Mary Beth has some additional support for those teachers in those specific areas.
So how many professional development trainings do you have for the teachers, elementary and high school per year?
For what, for?
For any, any professional development, like what are the plans?
It's, it's, it's ongoing, it's ongoing. But as you can see, every curriculum meeting, we have something for everyone grades K through twelve, every teacher. Staff members can go to workshops on their own. We also have PLCs. We also have the superintendent's conference day, where we have, I think, one or one and a half days this year, um, for superintendent conference day to get PD.
Okay. And the other thing was, um, when you gave us the data for the high school, could you break it out the next time by regions that they take? So if it's English, it's, uh, global history, if it's earth science, because?
Instead of collectively, just do it individually? I have that data as well.
For us to understand, because then you actually see the progression of our students. Because you know, there's a report out that is saying that our twelfth graders, not particularly for Mount Vernon, but their, their literacy, their reading skills are not very strong, right? And so I'd like to see some of the data from the regions to understand where the weaknesses in subject matter.
Sure, no problem.
Especially for high school students. And I appreciate.
That's not a problem. We have that information.
Thank you. Trustee McDonough?
Hi, thanks, Dr. Doggett. Just two, two questions. One, I'm just curious to know, what are, what are the odds of a, say, a student who is, uh, gets an L three in third grade math, that that student will backtrack and be an L two in eighth grade? So what are the odds of a student who becomes proficient early falling back later on? How stable is proficiency?
Proficiency is, is pretty stable. One of the things we have to be careful is we had some slippage early on, as you can see, maybe two years ago. We've done a better job at using our MTSS to, um, dump, do progress monitoring throughout the year to catch those students who are slipping. And one of the things that we, we would like to do, we have students that we call on the cusp. We strictly monitor those students. And on the cusp means that you can be a level, high level two going to three or low level three that we want to make sure we do not slip.
Solidify the game.
Yes, yes. So we solidified a RTI, MTSS, RTI process to make sure that doesn't happen. So we've done a better job with that process.
Great, no, thank you. The, the second question is, I know the, the superintendent's goals has been pretty much three percent across the board, which is a good, which is a good, good goal.
Not anymore.
It's five now, five, five percent.
Five percent.
Okay. So the question then is, and I know right now, uh, the graphics you showed, um, we're going through that change process.
Yes.
Sort of like, you know, a plane going through turbulence.
Yes.
And we get to the clear air on top and smooth sailing. What, what will the expectation be at that point? Will, will we be looking for, for change to occur more, more quickly at that point, once we institutionalize and refreeze these processes?
That's the whole.
So, so how ambitious are we going to be and what's the timeline on that?
I think the soup may want to answer that question about.
So, uh, that's a great question, uh, trustee McDonough. I will say that, um, this fall, um, after I, you know, sort of let the dust settle with, you know, all of the changes. I do want to get into the strategic planning process. And that's where we start long-term saying, where do we want to be within five years with our district? And that'll serve as a roadmap as to what it is that we want this district to look like. And it, it becomes like, you know, it's broken out almost yearly, uh, to say, this is what we are trying to accomplish this year. This is what we want to do by this year. Because we know that, uh, growth is incremental and you don't want to see huge increases. You don't, like, I, I, I love the fifteen percent.
Scary.
But it's also scary because it, the state ed starts looking like, huh? And, you know, we know what has happened in places like Atlanta, Georgia, DC, things of that nature. And we don't want eyes to be on us as if we're doing something incorrect. But when you're talking about three to five percent, you know that you're making incremental progress. And that's why, you know, I'm changing goals to five percent, you know?
Yes.
Okay. Our trustee Adoro?
Honestly, the slides that were shown, uh, right now, uh, was so, was very clear. And it gave me insights, which is very fascinating, uh, about Mount Vernon, which I didn't know about. I like to say this, I want to say this actually. The main reason for the student success is mostly goes to the teachers. The teachers are the reason why, you know, um, we, well, how can I say this? The teachers are the reason why we are striving, most of the students are striving to do their best. And I just realized, uh, trustee, uh, Kelly just said, uh, mentioned something about, um, she mentioned something about, um, the staff turnover. Okay, so as, as a student, I could definitely, I could definitely say it had a big impact on, uh, the students. Because some students build connections through the teachers and which definitely boosted the students more overall. And once they left, um, well, all I can say, I can say, I was devastated devastated and most of the students kept on complaining about, um, you know, the staff being gone and, um, their favorite teacher's going to be gone. So I can say that for that. But yeah, mostly that's what I wanted to add.
Thank you. And thank you to the board, you know, for, um, you know, passing our resolutions. We take that work seriously, our superintendent, um, our cabinet, our CNI cabinet has done a great job as well. The building leaders, the teachers, uh, we have to thank the parents as well. And definitely our students, you know, for doing a great job because we know they can and we love them.
Yes, we definitely are grateful to our teachers because we know that they motivate and inspire our students in order to, to be successful. And if you have a great student, you know, we thank a great teacher. So I just wanted to know if Dr. Strickland had something he wanted to add?
Yes, uh, thank you all for your comments. And, uh, this really is to, uh, like, one of my goals was to really shine a light on the academics. I want to have these conversations in front of our community to let us know, let them know that we are focusing on what is happening in the classroom. I, I not only want to thank our teachers and, um, but I, I really want to thank the building leadership. I mean, that's paramount for me. The leader can change the, the trajectory of a school district. And that's why I put a lot of emphasis, uh, I, I said this before, if, um, if you don't feed the teachers, they eat the students. And that starts with building leaders. And, and I really believe that wholeheartedly. I do want to also thank the parents because they do the first step, which is to make sure their children come to school. And I must say that I have been extremely impressed with the, um, the low chronic absenteeism rate in our district. Which is impressive for a, a, an urban district of our black and brown students, you know, that have struggles, that have, you know, issues with barriers in our geography, you know, walking to school and whatnot. I did want to say, as in terms of the curriculum adoptions, uh, Dr. Doggett was right on. My goal is to really ensure that that process involves not only, um, teachers and leaders, but it also involves students. And, and we get families to be able to review curriculum materials and say, and give their insight as to what it is that they feel, uh, is going to work best for their children. I'm thinking about trustee Peterson's point around Discovery Ed. All I will say is that that was a supplement, uh, in a previous district of mine. So I was surprised to see that as the main component, uh, in, in our district. Thank you for the comment on departmentalization. I will say that was a myth that I came into where, uh, departmentalization is not allowed. And I, I did not know who made that up. But, um, one of the things that I charged these, um, school leaders was to departmentalize at least with sixth grade. If me as a principal, you could not teach English and math in my building. Because the, the load for both of those subjects in particular is too heavy. And it really helps with the planning. It really helps a teacher focus on the planning. It helps the leader focus their professional development. It helps the curriculum and instruction team really focus their professional development. And next year I charged, uh, schools to consider going down to third grade. Because they can do it, uh, in the suburbs. Guess what? Those third graders don't have the same teacher. They go from class to class and they do it on their own. But we tend to police our kids and we want them in these straight lines and we want them to not talk. And then they get into class and they can't talk. So want to loosen up the reins a little bit and really teach them how to be responsible young adults. I also am a big proponent of self-contained, um, departmentalization. Self-contained students are those individuals that probably need it the most. They're impacting our suspensions and that's because they're with the same teacher all day. So let's, even if we have a teacher do third and fourth grade, two different classes, but at least they stay in the same content, then they get, they get to move. I mean, they're, they're getting antsy and then that leads to outward behaviors because they're in the same room all day. So also going to be pushing that, really, we need to focus on tier one instruction. Again, we, um, us educators, all of us, tend to want to remediate, remediate, remediate. We have to bring the students where they need to be. We have to teach to the standards and not below the standards. So, um, that, that needs to be emphasized so that they won't actually backtrack. Because that's what happens. I wanted to talk about the Nelson Mandela RTA data. So I believe as of last year, um, those students were actually split among the three high schools because they come from the three high schools. And that shouldn't be represented alone, uh, because they make up Den, um, Denzel Washington students. It makes up Mount Vernon High School students and STEAM students. So, uh, as we move forward, you will see that as no more. And they will be distributed, um, the way, uh, it should be. Focused on interim goals. One of my interim goals that I will be presenting, uh, hopefully at the end of the month at the business meeting, is around third grade reading. Because that's the, the year where they're now reading to learn. If they're not proficient by grade three, that's when you get the backslide traditionally. And then fifth grade for math, because sixth grade becomes heavy in algebra. And that's the, one of the number one reasons why a student doesn't graduate, which is algebra. I, I will say in terms of delineating the region's exams, very important. That's also a part of my interim goals, looking at algebra in particular. That means marking period data, looking at benchmarks, assessments, uh, diagnostic assessments, as well as biology. Those are two gatekeepers and why the failure rates are as high as they are, those two courses in particular. And then you may know it is English three for our English language learners and students with disabilities all around. And then, you know, finally, I do want to give props to Associate Superintendent Graves. She has developed a new exit survey. So you will start getting data on why people are choosing to leave in the executive content. So thank you for her to follow through. And lastly, I would, I would be remiss to not thank Dr. Doggett and his leadership, as well as the CNI team. Considering the fiscal challenges that we face, to see the data not slide back the way it possibly should as a result of how money is just spent is phenomenal. And I, I just want to thank you, sir, from, uh,
Thank you.
You know, on behalf of the students and staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for lunch tomorrow, too.
I got a paper check, so I didn't get deposited yet.
I just want to say. It's so, it's so good to hear this laughter. I just want to say thank you also, Dr. Doggett. And I want to just say thank you to the trustees for asking such thoughtful, um, questions and just listening to the presentations and really digging in the data and making sure that our students are receiving what it is that they need to receive. So I just want to say thank you for your leadership as well. We will move on to our human resources resolutions to see whether or not we have any questions so that we can, um, so that we can, hopefully, we can move through them quickly. Uh but we will, we will entertain all of your questions tonight. So we at three point one, human resources number one, three two A certified temporary teaching appointments. Dr. Dogg, I mean, I'm sorry, Dr. Strickland has a comment?
So uh trustees, I just want to again thank you all. Uh if, as a reminder, I talked about fast track hiring. The individuals we won't do that for are the administrators. However, you will see this temporary uh word now. And that's because we want to get uh teachers, um cleaners, custodians, anyone that isn't administratively certified in front of students as quick as possible. So they would remain temporary until the business meeting so that it avoids us voting tonight uh if we don't need to. But also it doesn't hinder us from getting uh a teacher or an adult in front of students or, you know, those high needs areas like our security officers, our teacher assistants, so on and so forth. So that's what the temporary means. Um and yeah, that's all.
Thank you for that explanation. Do we have any questions on this resolution? Seeing and hearing none, we'll go to three point two, human resources number one, three two A certified rescinding resolution. Any questions or comments? Seeing and hearing none, three point three, human resources number one, three two A certified resignations. Any questions or comments? Three point four, human resources number one, three two A certified additional compensation. Any questions or comments? Three point five, human resources number one, three two A certified recall teachers and teaching assistants. Any questions, comments? Three point six, human resources number one, three two A certified extracurricular and coaching appointments. Questions, comments? Three point seven, human resources resolution number one, three two B classified appointments of per diems and substitutes. Any questions or comments? Three point eight, human resources number one, three two B approval of reinstatement. Questions or comments? Three point nine, human resources resolution number one, three two B classified as it read amended. Questions, comments? Three point one zero, human resources resolution number one, three two B classified approval of provisional appointment. Questions or comments? I do have one question. Um do we need the end date since we did it in three point nine? Do we need the end date in the three point one zero resolution?
Okay, um for this one, not right now because she has to take the exam ano- another time. So it won't be an end date for this appointment. Thank you.
Uh trustee Scott?
So going back to
Three point nine?
Three point nine, where this person did pass the exam, there's no end date. Is that, does there need to be an end date or is this?
There's an end date for the probation period on the second, the second one.
First one is just where she started, where this person started. Okay, I got you. Thank you very much.
Okay, okay. Any questions, any other questions? Three point one one, human resources resolution number one, three two B classified approval of rescission of provisional probationary permanent appointments. Any questions or comments? I do have one question. Um have we, what efforts have we made to secure the notice in writing?
The notice, we have tried to have an official letterhead for most of these positions for people to accept. But I know for the recall, for the teaching assistance for RTA, um we had um a situation where TAs had to be called back hopefully the next day. So we were here late, contacted them via email and phone, but we wanted absolutely get it in writing, at least for the email so they can start the next day because there were a need for about five TAs at RTA.
Thank you. Any other questions? Three point one two, human resources number one, three two B resignations. Questions, comments? Trustee, uh Vice President Mitchell.
Are we going to have the, hold on a second, let me just make sure I'm in. Are we gonna see the actual letters attached?
They should be.
I believe they are. An executive competent.
We're on three twelve? Hold on, let me do a refresh. Hold on a second, maybe that's what it is. You can go on, I'll come back.
Thank you. Three point one three, human resources request for leave of absence under the Family and Medical Leave Act FMLA. Any questions or comments? Yes, trustee Middleton.
Um my question is that if a staff member had surgery, has surgery and the doctor says because they would be ineffective in a classroom, particularly special ed that and cannot function as a staff member in the class and the doctor gives a note and says they gotta be at home for a while. On what basis or reason would you deny that person FMLA?
It would be denied if they did not have the required number of hours worked the previous year preceding the leave request. Um that is a mandate um on the federal level that the certain number of hours has to be met before they can be entitled to FMLA. It doesn't mean that they can't use their sick leave, it just means it won't be a leave under that provision.
And and what would those hours, what are those hours?
One thousand two hundred and fifty hours.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other questions or comments? Yeah, making me laugh, making me laugh. I do have a question. If an individual is approved for FMLA, but they also participate in extracurricular activities or they may be a coach, what would, what would happen? Would they be able to still participate? Would we need to seek another individual to cover that position or how would that work?
Yeah, another person, another person, excuse me, would have to be seeked to fill that position. Because when they're on FMLA, the understanding is that they are not going to be working at all.
Mm-hmm, okay, even if it's intermittent, which could be?
Even if it's intermittent.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Okay, any other questions, comments? Section four, curriculum and instruction. Four point one, authorization to approve to continue the district's Title I schoolwide committee for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Questions, comments? Four point two, appointment of technology links for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year. Questions, comments? I do have a question. What is the formula for selecting the school links and the ratio of either per student or per teacher? And how are they um sourced? Dr. Strickland, you want to designate?
So we'll have Mr. Ramirez, our Director of Technology, uh answer the question.
Good evening, President of the Board and Trustees, Superintendent Schools. So the tech links are instructional staff, teachers, assistants, and they work in the schools. They apply for these positions that are stipend based for the entire school year. They work with their leadership in every school building. So the principals lead the efforts for professional development, adoption of the instructional initiatives. And right now we have, you know, the iPad instructional initiative in K four. There are other professional development plans that are in in progress through curriculum instruction and the traditional, you know, implementation of the curriculum. So all of these technology links are selected to support those initiatives onsite in every school building. The selection process is they applied for the position. When we get the uh the number of applicants, we discuss with the principals what is their preference in terms of the work that they've been doing. So it's not a given, it's actually that they earn based on the uh commitment to the school building leadership and the and the goal set by the leadership on the district level.
So is there a formula that is used in terms of the number of students that are being served versus a number of teachers that are in the building? Only because I'm looking at the list and I have, I see some schools that have uh lower enrollment numbers that have the same number of links, um tech links that have, that there's a school with a large population and they have the same number. So I'm just wondering, um what, is there a specific formula where you would be able to identify how many links would be appropriated to each building? And is it just administrative desire?
We made adjustments based on the availability of the positions, but we have the same numbers from last year. This year we were able to provide for the high schools with larger enrollments like Mount Vernon STEAM with an additional tech link. It's not really a formula like two hundred students per tech link, it's actually larger than that. We, in some cases, they cover three hundred students because Mount Vernon STEAM is really nine hundred and change. So we try to provide as much as we can based on the budget resources that we have and these are lines that don't change. They basically stay the same every year.
So, Dr. Strickland? Uh just uh just uh help him out. Our high schools uh have three tech links and our K six or K eight have two tech links. Um I will say that that is something, you know, in the future we can look at and will look at in terms of proportion. Uh like what is the proportion of folks uh that are deployed at different schools?
Thank you. Uh trustee Scott?
Are these um staff that applied for this or were they selected because of certain skills? How how did we get all of these names?
As I mentioned before, they are regular instructional staff, teachers that are working in those buildings and they get a stipend for the additional work that they do under the leadership of the principal. And it's all instructional work, professional development, adoption of initiatives by curriculum instruction. So they all apply, so it's a competition. And then there is a process for selection with the principal of the building. Thank you.
Can you just refresh my memory in terms of the stipend?
I believe it is in there, it's three thousand?
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
This is an adjacent question.
Trustee Kelly.
Students were um given iPads. Can you explain the program, how iPads were distrib, was it iPads? Were distributed, did all staff get them? How, did special education get, like how would they, right, how were they distributed in the district?
So um I will say before I hand it out to Mr. Ramirez that the iPads are distributed for uh K four.
K two four.
K to four. Um the rollout is is happening. I will also say I did have the opportunity to sit on the uh meeting with the Apple individuals with uh Mr. Ramirez and, you know, hear about the professional learning that will take place, which I actually um did in a previous district as a as a principal, um which it's very, very good. Uh I do know that the rollout hasn't been as pretty. Um and I will allow Mr. Ramirez to speak on that. Uh but I do know that we are almost getting to the uh space where all of our students will be okay.
Yes, so grades K through four are now having this implementation of the new iPads that completed. The distribution was completed last week, Friday. Today we got delivery of additional headphones for the new model. They are going to be distributed the rest of this week and we will have a full implementation. Tomorrow we have another training scheduled for the teachers with Apple Classroom. So this will be the second one in the last couple of weeks that we're having with this majority of teachers in the grades K through four. Our goal is to continue doing this every month and that's why the tech links are critical because we want to do a train the trainer model and release that content and information to all the schools.
And that includes the special education students?
Includes the special education and includes the teachers.
And it's a, are they phases, like this is phase one?
This is phase one.
Okay, that's right. Thank you very much.
I just want to refer that before we had iPads in grades pre-K all the way to second grade. But interesting enough, our teachers didn't have the device. Now they have it and they can take advantage of the full motion of the device and the Apple Classroom resource to control and do classroom management.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Any other questions regarding this resolution? Thank you. Four point three, approval for boys varsity basketball team to travel to Oahu, Hawaii to compete in the Ailani Classic.
I got a question.
I want, I got a question, can I go? Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, back to business. Vice, Vice President Mitchell.
So yeah, so we've been, this is, this Hawaii trip is not new, we've been doing it. But what I did notice this year is that the cost this year is the lowest it's been in several years. So I look back across the last, I don't know, we got twenty twenty two, twenty nineteen, all the way back to twenty sixteen first. So who determines the cost for like the hotel rooms and things like that? So I'm looking at, um for a prior year, we were like three hundred and fifty dollars a person for meals by twenty people. When now it's uh twenty people, they're twenty dollars a day for six days. Who comes up with the schematic to put these costs together and present them to us for resolutions?
Well, I will say that um Coach Semino does, uh excuse me, our athletic director, uh Mr. Semino does uh put forth this resolution. I cannot answer that, but what I will do is, I I made note already and I will ask um those details based off of years prior. I just wanted to make sure that the board policy was being followed and you were aware of this out of uh state trip.
I guess the only other question I have then is, I mean, we got more than, we have more than basketball. We have several. We have more than one, one sport. So I'm gonna shine a light for a hot second. The district has a lot of different sports. I haven't heard this trip or this type of thing done for any other sport in the district. Does that say that all our other sports suck? I mean, what is this, well, I mean, you know, I'm just. How is it that none of our other teams get to embark on this type of, uh, go ahead, go ahead. He's looking for the mic.
Dr. Strickland, would you like to del- delegate someone to respond?
Go ahead, Dr. Doggett, but I will say in um, you know, in previous districts, I mean, well, we do know that the light does shine a little lighter on our basketball uh team. Uh I am a proponent of making sure we open up all opportunities, especially with our women in athletics, uh big time. That is one of my biggies. Uh I I I would take the time and opportunity to charge Coach Semino with, you know, looking for those additional opportunities for our other sports as well, especially for our young ladies. You know, but I'll let Dr. Doggett go ahead and respond.
Each sport has its own specific type of tournament, so not all sports do tournaments like this. So like if you say, for example, our track team goes to Pennsylvania. Um our cheerleading team, they went to Florida. So we do go to different tournaments, they just don't go to Hawaii. So those tournaments, this is a a big national tournament and it's really big. So and our our team competes and, you know, Coach Semino has those connections as well with basketball. So that's why this happens. But we do, we sent our soccer team somewhere, I believe somewhere too, I can't remember all right now. But they do have opportunities to go to their tournaments for their specific field, just not Hawaii. Where we all want to go.
And that's the question that I wanted to have answered live. We, you just mentioned we sent the soccer team as well, but it's not like they're just going on a trip for vacation to have a good time. They're going to compete. And even though it's right here in the words, the word on the street is not consistent of the words that are here. So that's why I wanted to ask the question and you just answered it perfectly, live on the camera, thank you.
But also, also one of the other things in reference to the basketball team. When you think about Mount Vernon, that's what you think of, right? So you have tournaments that would make it easier for the better teams to go, to prop up the tournament. So if your team is not good, you're not going to get the invitation to Hawaii. But if your team is very good, which will make another team that is even better, come from Alaska or come from Chicago because Mount Vernon is there, then you're gonna get that opportunity. And that's the staple of Mount Vernon, it's been basketball.
And just an additional comment for some of my question.
I got trustee Kelly and then let, we're gonna go, we're gonna do this in order. So trustee Kelly and then I saw trustee Scott and then I saw trustee Peterson.
So my question is, when teams do fundraisers, is it part of our resolution so we know how it impacts the cost of the trip? Question?
So again, um I I will make note of that question that you provided and include that in my letter uh for you all because I can't quite answer that. However, I will, I do see that it it shows A funds, uh which is very likely that uh there's some funds within the district that have actually helped to support this initiative. And, you know, that's, that's the only thing that I can say.
Okay, and the second part of this is. Okay, and the second part of this is, um, when they, uh, participate in these tournaments, uh, is there any monetary, or is it just for the fun of the sport? Well, I don't know, with the update in the college profession, I'm just asking.
Oh, no, no, no. That's, that's not allowed.
And you don't have booster, um, like alumni booster clubs that kind of support some of this?
Well, they, they might support some of the costs. I mean, if you look at the resolution, there's like three cultural excursions. So that was done by fundraising, we can't pay for that as a district. We can pay for transportation, we can pay for dinner for the students. Uh, but certain things, we can pay the, um, the tournament cost and things of that nature. We, we have to be, we have regulations that we have to follow in terms of what we pay for.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, trustee Scott?
Thank you. I am all for this. You know, because I've experienced it, you know, my son experienced it when he played on the team. And it's not just about the basketball. It's about the educational experience as well of going to these locations and doing these things. So the cultural excursions are very important, just as much as the basketball. And the, the players come back, and they're different. You know, they're more explored in terms of their mind and things that they see, where they can possibly play at certain schools, because they get to talk to other players from all over the, um, the country. So it's a great thing that this is being done, and I see that they've cut down. So that could be another reason why the costs have gone down, because I know that they've had a lot more people go that were not players. And this year, I see that they only have like four people going, so that could be a reason why the numbers are down as well. But this is a great thing, and I'm all for it.
Trustee Peterson?
I totally was going to second exactly what trustee Scott said. And as someone who went with them their last trip, what makes Mount Vernon High School so different is that they are playing schools who get to pick players from the entire country. And we are one of the only schools that play in this, where all of our players come right here from these four square miles. So it's really, it is something to see, these, these young men from these four square miles play against these players who are, I mean, just all over the, all over the country. So it's, it's just, it's an amazing tournament.
And I would just like to say that we, we know that experiences and exposure is really what helps to, um, educate our children. Because if you can actually go to a place, it's one thing to hear about Hawaii, but it's another thing to actually go there and visit and be immersed in the culture. So, um, anytime we have an opportunity for our children to be able to explore and to be immersed in a culture somewhere else, I'm, I'm, I love to travel. So, um, I would just say that any opportunity that you can have to travel, let's go. Okay, so just wanted to say that. Any other comments on this particular? Okay. 4.4 Authorization to Accept a Memorandum of Understanding Between the City School District of New Rochelle and the Mount Vernon City School District for Pool Usage at the Mount Vernon Aquatic Facility. Any questions or comments? Trustee Kelly?
Have we increased the amount? I see that the amount, it looks like the amount has gone up. Has it been increased? The amount of the rental of the lanes?
So I believe the amount actually did go up. Uh, I just, um, I'm new to this process. I just know that they do have all their certificates of insurance, um, that is needed, uh, from our general counsel. So, um, that's what I can't answer, but, uh, the council did inform me that the price went up.
Okay, and the other thing is, I think I mentioned before, just one more, that's it. I had mentioned that, uh, our, our representative Gary Pretlow had asked, when he secured the funding for this pool, that we have free classes for community. Did you investigate that as of now, as an aside? This is an adjacent question, always.
That, that I have not, but, uh, that's good to know, so that, um, I will, uh, talk more about that.
Um, I just wanted to make sure that we did not leave our student representative out. Um, trustee Adoro, do you have any comments on any of these items that we just discussed in four, section four?
Does that include the Hawaii trip?
Yes, it does.
Then, um, then, um, you know, agreement with everything then. But to be honest, um, as a person, one of the students that a lot of, uh, students in my, uh, school envy, because I get to go on trips and two-day trip, two-day trips and other stuff. Um, it's a great experience in which, uh, they can, uh, spread Mount Vernon. For example, during the summer, which I've already mentioned to most of the trustees, I went to, um, North Carolina for some weeks, and I won myself a silver medal in, uh, you know, uh, NAACP. Thank you. In the process, I boosted, um, and other, uh, Mount Vernon students boosted the, uh, the name of Mount Vernon aloud, and people now know Mount Vernon as a place, so, um, if-- You're welcome. But, so, um, if the, oh, what's the, STEAM, I said STEAM, um, sorry. Mount Vernon gets to go to, uh, play in Hawaii, uh, they can just boost their name and get, maybe, uh, us benefit in, you know, you know, good way. Oh, yeah, that's, I mean--
Thank you, thank you for your--
Actually, wait, can I get on that trip?
Get in line, get in line, right? Any other comments? Okay. Section five, pupil personnel services. 5.1 Authorization to Change the Name of the Pupil Personnel Services to Student Personnel Services. Questions or comments? Trustee Kelly?
I wanted to roll back up the curriculum instructions. I wanted to know about the greenhouse.
If I'm not mistaken, so, we can't talk about that because it's on the agenda, but, I mean, I have--
We can, um, we can, we can--
It's on the agenda?
I'm sorry. No, no, we took--
It's not on the agenda.
No, we--
That was--
We can, okay, we can-- No, what I was going to say is, we can, we can ask if there are any other items that you want to add at the end.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there you go, and now we'll have an answer.
Okay, all right, thank you. Authorization to Change the Name of Pupil Personnel Services to Student Personnel Services. Any questions, comments? I see trustee McDonough?
Yeah, just, I'm out of curiosity, is this, um, a trend that's happening going from PPS to student personnel services?
Not that I'm aware of.
What was the--
But there was, um, the pupil personnel services, there, there was, uh, it was brought to our attention, the idea of pupil, um, being, um, not clear to those from an English-speaking perspective. An I pupil versus a pupil relating to the term student. There was some, a lack of clarity. Then we, there was, uh, the idea of throwing out student support services. That was brought to our attention, that, that may, the SSS, uh, may be offensive to--
Yeah, I could see that being a problem.
Okay, so then you, if you wanted to speak in, in detail, that was brought to our attention, and it, it hit home to the point where I was like, I'm not interested in engaging in anything that could offend--
So just student is an easier term for general understanding than pupil?
Correct.
Got it, okay.
You said it better than I could have--
Seems like pupil is just more archaic, I would think. Any other questions or comments? Okay. 5.2 Approval of Pupil Personnel Services Memorandum Number 04, dated September 30, 2025.
I have a question.
Any ques-- okay, Vice President Mitchell?
Does that mean that these, these approvals for pupil personnel services, the naming is going to change? From pupil personnel services?
Based on the vote?
Yeah, based on the vote.
No, no, that'll, that'll happen after the business meeting, based off of whatever the trustees--
After the vote.
Okay, okay.
And it can be backdated, can it? If you need it--
It, it can, I mean, generally, the appetite, I didn't, there's no difference in cost. It's just really a naming convention, uh, that we would like to put forth. And honestly, it's, it's more, it's more family-friendly.
Uh, I do have a, a 5.2 Approval of Pupil Personnel Services Memorandum Number 04, dated September 30, 2025. I just want to make sure if anyone has any questions or comments on that? I did have one question. Have we confirmed the residency of the students that are registered in these programs, or these, um, schools?
So as it pertains to some of the residencies, I know that that's an ongoing process that we are encountering. As of right now, we just have to be sure that any student that is on our books are receiving services. However, there was mentioned, and even our state monitor brought it up today, or, and, and it was on one of our calls, that we do possibly need to take the next step in finding an investigator uh, to actually figure out, uh, who is actually living then within, living within the four square miles of Mount Vernon, um, and who isn't, that we are providing services to. Uh, so that is ongoing. I'm pretty sure that some individuals are getting services that are not in our city. And, uh, as we encounter those, we will take them off of our books. Um, we, we have good direction as to what to do from, uh, our state monitor, and I want to thank her for that.
Yes, because we do have a wide range of the cost per student in, in here, use it from like 5,000 to 30-something thousand. So I just wanted to make sure that we're not spending money that we shouldn't be spending. Okay. Uh, 6.1, so we're now in 6.1, uh, uh, section six, business office? 6.1 Authorization to Increase the 2024-2025 Budget. Any questions or comments? Uh, Dr. Strickland, do you have a comment you would have, would you like to explain?
So, um, just want to explain that, uh, we have the opportunity to increase last year's budget. Uh, as you may know, our funds sit in a bank account, uh, that accrues interest. And, um, we found out after an audit, uh, our treasurer said we, there is an additional 2.5 million that we had to increase the budget, because that's the funding that we had. Now, that 2.5 million, remember, is really going to help cover the costs, uh, that we went over in terms of transportation, um, just to help minimize the budget. But we have to put forth, yes, offset the deficit. We have to put forth a resolution to, uh, actually do that officially.
Trustee Kelly?
Yes, well, we have a monthly report from the treasurer and the auditor, claim auditor--
Yes.
Our working meeting?
Yes, it will be in the board business meeting, just as we did last month.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other, trustee Scott?
I don't have a question on 6.1, but I wanted to know if we can go back to 5.2, so I could just ask a question on that.
So as soon as we finish 6.1, I will, I will go back to 5.2. Anyone, uh, trustee McDonough?
Hi, um, so I'm just looking at the, it's the interest and penalties on taxes and the interest on taxes from the settlement with the city, right? And so this is an accrual basis, it's accrual accounting. So it's not going to impact cash, we're not getting that money in cash. So it's just per books for this year accrual accounting.
For, for last year.
For last year, for the accrual account.
Yes, for the accrual accounting, yep. Now, it, now, I'm sorry. Now, if we did not have, um, a deficit, we could have placed that money in this year's budget. However, we do, so we had to put it towards last year.
Any other questions or comments on 6.1? Okay, by request of trustee Scott, uh, we will go back to 5.2. Is that the, okay. 5.2 Approval of Pupil Personnel Services Memorandum Number 04, dated September 30, 2025?
Yes. Um, just for my education, I see that in some of the contracts listed below, it says partially executed contract. Can you just explain that to me versus the ones that don't say partially?
So the ones that are partially executed, uh, they're all partially. I do know that this resolution in particular is one of those resolutions where, uh, we, we have to offer mandated services to our students with disabilities. And I do know that our counsel has been going back and forth with these organizations to make sure he gets the certificates of insurance, as well as SAMs, uh, and, uh, insurance, 5 million over 5 million for sexual abuse and misconduct. Uh, so these are in process, but we have to go ahead and start those mandated, uh, processes as per the IEP.
And I'll just add one other thing. Sometimes you'll see, I, I know the board brought this up, uh, actually trustee, uh, Mitchell brought it up, the last board meeting and working meeting. Who, Brown?
Yes.
Oh, Brown. So Brown. Uh, in reference to looking at contracts and having them backdated. So what happens is, you send the contract out, the vendor is eager to sign. They sign, they send all the documents, their supplements, their COI certificate of insurance. I look at it, say, hold up, wait a minute. We're not going to do the process all over. We get that fixed, we retain the sign, copy at least on the top, and then the last signature comes to the board, and then that's the one that really rules. But in the meantime, we try to get kids on board, and we try to move the process, so we don't stand still. So it's like a fast-tracking.
Okay, no, no, no problem. Any other questions? 6.2 Approval of General Funds Transfers for September 20, 16, 2025? Any questions? Trustee Kelly?
Yes, um, I see that it's $100,000 to transfer, the amount, um, and it says urgent situations. Are we going to define urgent situations?
So, so, um, I'm just following the policy, uh, just because the amount is above, it's above 10,000, um, I, I could just tell you that it was, let me see, I'm sorry. Where is, no. Sorry, so I don't know why, just, I'm sorry, just a moment. Sorry, there is a link at the bottom of the, um, at the bottom of the, uh, the resolution. Uh, this one was a funky one that I wanted to actually change. Sorry to use that word on this, but it's the truth. Um, I wanted this actually to be forward-facing, so that it's not confusing. But if you could see, we're moving, uh, 16,000 from one account to a different account, and it was for, uh, covering the cost of the speaker at convocation. Uh, and that's where the line, uh, the actual function code and object code is. It's in the Board of Education's line.
So is this basically a correction of the account code?
So this is just putting before you why we're moving the funds, and you will see that at the bottom, uh, it says to cover the keynote speaker and expenses for the 2025-2026 convocation on the second page, but--
I was talking about the $100,000 as opposed to, I understand for the--
Oh, so--
That, not the, yeah, and the, yes.
So, I mean, if that's the will of the board, um, that's something that we can actually discuss. Uh, generally, you will not see any, like, resolution, um, come before you that has been over 100,000, where it's not ran by this board.
Okay.
Um, so, you know, that's, you know, if you see something, we'll talk about it, definitely.
And, and if it's just for a gap stop, in order to ensure, that's something that the board can go back to revisit in terms of our policies, so, okay? So 6.3 Authorization for 2025 Lease Payments for, eh, I'm sorry, Lease Payments to 1832 Broadway Management Corporation for the Teacher Center, oh, of Central Westchester. Questions or comments? 6.4 Authorization to Approve an Extension for Seven Engineers to Provide Capital Projects Accounting Services. Questions? 6.5?
I do want to go back to 6.3, sorry.
Okay, that's okay. 6.3, we're going to go back to 6.3?
Yes, I just want to be, uh, shed light on this resolution, because this is also something that actually started, um, it's backdated in July. Um, in the future, and I've already explained that we have to be on it, but the funds were released later, which is why we actually had to, uh, we, they allowed us to use the facilities in July. However, we did not actually secure the funding until September, uh, for this, uh, this lease in particular.
And we are, we are the fiduciary agent for the teacher's center. So they, all of the monies for all of the, uh, consortiums in Westchester County, there are professional development opportunities for teachers. And through those grants, the grant comes from New York, um, State Education Department. And what happens is, we are actually the conduit that holds all of the funds for New York State, um, from the grant, and it is administered out of our fiscal office. And so we are responsible for paying the bills, even though the money doesn't come out of our budget, so to speak. Um, so, um, I guess there was probably a question as to what, how this, this happens and, and what happened, so that-- So I guess there was probably a question as to what, how this, this happens and what happened, so that was probably part of the delay. And also just the drawdown of the funds in order for it to come into our budget line, into our accounts before we actually spend the money, so.
Well said, well said.
Trustee Kelly, you have more? Oh, trustee Peterson?
I'm sorry, just, it's, it's for going back to, I'm sorry, four point two, it just, there's a, a name change that needs to be made on page three of the MOU.
Okay, you want to go back to four point two?
Aquatic.
Okay, no, the technology links or the aquatic?
For the aquatic, four point four, I'm sorry, four point four. Page three of the MOU.
Okay, just want to make sure we're done with six point three. Any other questions on six point three? Okay, then we'll go back to four point four. Authorization to accept a memorandum of understanding between, can you just give us?
I do, I see exactly what it is that she's talking about. It doesn't list the current board president.
Thank you. Six point, wait a minute, six point five? Anyone have anything above six point five that we'd like to go back to before we move forward? Okay. Approval to join the RIC One Risk Operations Center for the data privacy agreements. Questions, comments? Six point six approval of the claims audit report for June 2025 and July 2025? Questions? Seven, okay, we're moving to seven and this is a vote? This is a vote and the vote is to authorize seven point one authorization to send the items to consent agenda, the items that we have already discussed.
Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
It's been moved properly seconded that we will authorize to send these items for consent agenda. May we have a vote, please?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion, please?
Oh, 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 I want to make sure. Does anyone have any other items that we, they feel as though they need to bring to the work session?
Yes.
Trustee Kelly?
Yes, in reference to the contract for the, Mr. Caprio to continue the greenhouse initiative.
So we have been able to secure funding to continue with the greenhouse initiative and we've secured that funding and through our Title I grant and it will be, we will be able to provide the, we will be able to continue the opportunity for our students at Mount Vernon High School with Mr. Caprio. But you will see that contract come through at the board business meeting. It won't be a part of the consent agenda as well as another contract with an agency, which, it's leaving me because it's past my bedtime. It's, but it will definitely be.
So sorry, Dr. Strickland, we asked too many questions.
No problem, no problem.
Excuse us.
But it will be, it will be at the business meeting. No.
Do we have any other questions or comments before we move to the, to section eight? Any other questions or comments from the board? Would any board member like, okay, okay, vice president Mitchell?
I just want to say thank you for having from the public site the attachments with the documentation and the numbers and the info, which is something we've struggled with and fought for, for a long time. It's good to see it from the public site, the transparency is finally here, so thank you very much for that, Dr. Strickland and district clerk Rita James, thank you.
Any other questions or comments before we move forward? Okay, thank you. We will, oh, there is one thing, that's what I wanted, I do want to say, you will notice that we have a model tonight and it is our vice president trustee Mitchell, and he would stand for us. On behalf, on behalf of your board leadership, we have purchased these polo shirts for all of our trustee board members, our, the cabinet members, our assistant superintendents, our technician. And I wanted to just say, we, we did that because we appreciate you and we wanted to just say thank you for the work that you do tirelessly and that you do not get paid for. And we just wanted to say thank you very much. And we will take a photo opportunity, everyone will wear them and we will, on October the 14th, and we will, we will take a photo of, of everyone in those polo shirts, so just wanted to acknowledge that. Yes, oh, for your birthday, right, October? Alright, so now we. I know, I know, I nearly forget. Our student trustee Adoro, I know it is probably about time for you to go and get some schoolwork done, but are there any last comments that you have before we go?
I mean, there are several I could say, but now because I have homework and AP classes to take, but I actually just received a message from one of my friends, he's telling, saying I should talk about the computer issues that there, that has arisen because phones have been taken, it's left for students results to your laptops, which is quote unquote, bad. And there are broken keyboards when they go to the library to change it, there's limited supplies and a lot of stuff. And one thing I would like to address personally because I run, what's, an esports in my school, extracurricular activities, it's not being able to be done because teachers don't get paid to do that. So that is one issue and a lot of students comes up to me because I'm the only active person in the school, keep on coming up to me, asking me, how can I do, how can I get extracurricular activities, blah, blah, yeah, and, well, it's tiring, but most of the times it's not possible because of that, but yeah, that's what I want to address.
Okay, so I know Dr. Strickland will follow up with, with our student trustee Adoro to ensure that we follow up with that. Any other que- trustee Middleton?
Because it's come to my attention and to my mind in the last couple of weeks and maybe a little more. What I have been asked by more than several people is how is it or why is it and somebody can bring clarity to it? That the community or even the school community and the community at large cannot talk to board trustees. That's a question that's, it's, it's circulating and I've gotten, you know, people who have asked that question and, and that we've agreed to that because that was asked of me like quite a few times in the last couple of weeks.
I mean, I know that we have not discussed this at all on this board and that we all ran on the fact that we are represented, representatives of our community and our constituents. And so that is, I don't know where that information is coming from, but that is absolutely not true. That members can speak to our board members. We have a, a board email address and I'm not sure if that's readily available, but parents can email us at boetrustees@mount, at Mount Vernon, MTVernonCSD.org if they have any questions or comments, and I think people have been doing that. Also, I would like for vice president Mitchell and for Dr. Strickland to also weigh in on that if he'd like to.
I'm just gonna add something. I have heard that, I've heard that as well. It's not just from our parents, it's also district workers as well and that's something that's old, that's not new. You know, staff is told from their building leads, don't talk to trustees about anything, we handle everything here in-house. We don't need people coming in here telling us what to do. That's something that's been going on for a long time and I think that stigma is still in place. But as far as parents, all of us have, all of us do have emails and Dr. Strickland, I'll let you speak to exactly the validity of that comment. And, you know, a lot of times unfortunately this district has been seeing a historical repetition that they, there's, nobody has any place to go for help. You have said it before, I've said it before, you know, the difficulty is, you know, if you're a worker in the district and you're being stepped on by your supervision or your building lead, you better not tell anybody. And I think that's the struggle, I, that's what I've been hearing. Haven't heard it, I've heard it from parents as well, but I think that's another piece to it.
And I just want to say that has been past practice, but I'm also hearing now that it's, it's continued to present day, so I don't know. And that's why I need to get clarity because I want to make sure that if I gotta respond, and I'm not gonna say nothing I don't need to say, but if I have to respond in a way, you know, my thing is always, hey, hit Dr. Strickland up, you know, go to our superintendent, he follows up, blah, blah, blah. Keep it, keep it optimistic. But if we can bring clarity to it because it's coming from the community as well as the schoolwide community, then while we're sitting here, that would be great. Thank you.
Well, I will say that I think that we have shown, based on our actions, that we have welcomed the community to come here, we have public comment. We actually are responsive to our public comment, which is not something that we have to do, but we feel it's courteous. If we can answer their questions, we do. I think that Dr. Strickland has been just a wealth of information and I think that, I don't know if it's, like I said, a past stigma, but I think that if, if people really want to see what it is that we're trying to do, that they'll come out, they will cast into our board meetings. We've also opened back up our Facebook page so that people are well aware and, and I think that we've been more open, we also posting on the district website. So I think that maybe it's something that people have felt in the past, but I hope that we are showing them that, that's, that's not what we're about and that we are open to listen and to hear our community. So, Dr. Strickland, if you'd like to weigh in?
No, I, I definitely agree with what President Maribou said. I will say that I do caution you all in regards to employees because it becomes personnel matters and you vote on those matters and if you are talking to those employees that are bringing you issues and then it comes to a vote, you actually need to recuse yourself from that and it becomes a huge conflict of interest. So it's, it's one of those things, and Dr. Middleton, you just said it perfectly, you send them my way, believe it or not, I can't always respond either because I can't be at that level and then I will get my staff to start responding accordingly. As it pertains to the public, I mean, they have the mic, they can come up, they do, and people are not shy, I will say that. But they, they, nobody's trying to silence any voices, however, we are trying to put in place protocols that are gonna make us run more efficient because things get talked to through the grapevine, it's half stories, a lot of times. I was also a building principal. I, it is very frustrating for a principal to, to have a superintendent or, or an assistant superintendent say so and so came to me and told me A, B, and C and that person didn't even go to the principal. So we have to have some organization, some level of decorum in which we are going to be productive and we can actually solve problems efficiently and effectively. And I know that hurts sometimes, but it's, it's true. And it, it really is not to cause, you know, to silence voices and things of that nature. It, it really is just to bring some order and really to keep you out of stuff that you don't need to be involved in. And, and, and especially when it comes to litigation because sometimes we're receiving emails, just putting it out there, from people that are bringing charges against the district. And then they're saying they're talking to all of, some of you, they're CCing you all. We saw one today. That should not happen and we definitely have to just, again, it's for your protection, it's not to silence anyone's voice.
Well, thank you for raising the concern. Thank you. I do want to just make sure that we, our state monitor is here. Dr. Wilkins, I just wanted to make sure that was there anything that you needed to add before we actually move into? I know we have to go into executive session, we're about to do that. I just want to make sure that I'm not leaving anything on the table.
No, it was actually a very well-run meeting. Everything's in order, so there's no comment. I made comments to the trustee over here, but he took care of it.
Thank you so very much. So if there's nothing else, if we can move into section eight, move into it, take a vote for executive session if there's any items that we have before us.
Can I have a motion, please, to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation, the financial history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to their appointment, employment, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation and to receive legal advice on a pending matter. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstained. Motion carries. We are in executive session.
Thank you. We are currently in executive session and we will not be returning to the room, so thank you very much for all of your participation.